Be minting it a lot.
All right, let's get started. We'd like to welcome everyone back to our city chambers. It's good to be back. It's normal again, so we're excited for that. So, welcome everyone that's here and everybody's watching in TV land. So I've asked councilmember Beck to give us our opening prayer.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're very grateful for the opportunity to be gathered this evening, and we're very grateful for the blessings that we have in our lives and to be able to live in Spanish Fork City. And we're thankful for the residents and their good hearts and their volunteer spirit. And we pray that they would watch over and protect us and keep us safe. And we pray for those that serve our community, that they will be safe. And we pray that thy Spirit will be with us tonight and that we can make the best decisions possible for our community. We thank thee for our blessings, and we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'll ask Councilman Argyle to lead us in the pledge allegiance. The audience, please rise and we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. Okay. Let's go into public comments. Anyone here from the public that would like to come and address the matter of council? Come on down.
Since nobody else is here, I just want to be the first comment. Once everybody came back to the chambers, my name is John Jensen. I'm applicant for the item 7A. Dave was nice to let me know that normally there's no public comment during that period nor any need for me to present. So anyway, just want to say hello and thank you for putting me on your agenda.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, let's go to council comments. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything at this time.
Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, the only thing I have to report is our garbage meeting we had at the end of March went well. Progress is going good with the design of the new transfer station. Of course, we're working on different changes with the, of course, cost in construction materials and different things, but our progress goes well with the new transfer station. So I want to report that as well as a settlement agreement that was came to out with the Nuera group through the dispute that we had over the gas to energy project. And that was resolved as of Monday, and so we're excited to move on from that chapter. And those are the two garbage updates that I have. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good enough. Thank you. All right, Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. The met last week with some volunteers in the community with the RAP Tax Committee that reviews requests from the citizens, from groups for, what do we call it, Dale? We can't call it scholarships, just award the.
They're just grants.
Grants. That's the word I was looking for. So grant applications, and those are still being reviewed. Looking to award those coming up in the next little while, in the next few weeks. But excited for that addition to our city that, you know, all these are estimates, but we estimate over half of those funds that get to be spent in parks, arts, and recreation in our community are coming from people that visit our community, that stop here and eat or stop here and shop. And so it's really neat to see that take shape in our community and really a lot of the arts programs be benefited by it. So thanks to those volunteers that put in a lot of time with also Dale and Bronco and his department to make that a success. The League of Cities and Towns, we have our mid-year conference starting tomorrow that we'll be attending one way or the other, virtually or in person to discuss the Utah League of Cities and Towns and the priorities for the upcoming year and legislative session. So excited to see everybody there and reconnect. I hold the record for the league president that had canceled the mid-year convention. Excited for that to not be a record anymore, so we'll hold a conference. Lastly, the Rotary Club spent some time with the good Rotarians today. I sent Angie some pictures of the Rotary Club. That was only a few of us. I didn't get to, that was the cleanup crew at the end, Dr. Franzen and his wife Pat, Rich Harrison and myself. Sold popsicles and popcorn and soda pop and everything. Cotton candy was the big hit. Got to think it made those kids get a little bit of a sugar high and run even faster down there. But we're down there at the track at the high school. And so I started to feel a little bit nostalgic because I was looking at it, walking around thinking, this is the last, you know, track meets that are going to be held at this place because we have a new high school coming. And so I looked, you know, on some of the plaques that are there and just, you know, I'm sure all this will be preserved in one way or the other, but I saw Mayor Steve Laeson Construction down there as a donor back when this was built and some good names of some good folks and businesses that helped get this built, that the Rotary gets to go down there and other organizations too and sell goods and services for, you know, for whatever events going on down there. And today it was the track event. So ran into a few good people that were helping out. Mark Rush of Parks and Rec Department would not let me shoot the starting gun. That's a good thing. So he kept a close eye on that. And then principal Adam Gull was at the finish line welcoming kids. Before I left, I took a walk underneath the bleachers and found some writings and figured that these better be preserved in some way because it's coming down. I looked and I looked. These are what I found at first, and I found no Brandon. Back then he was known as Gordo, and so I started looking further down the way and I found a few. I found a few. I kept looking. I'm like, wait, he's married to Rachel.
Donuts, pizza.
Yeah. Found all this stuff. And then finally, after an hour of looking, I found Rachel. So it took a while, but we found everybody's.
You can just take a marker to the bleachers because they're tearing them.
Now, I will tell you, this is, no, this is.
Chief, it's graffiti. You know how the mayor feels about graffiti.
No, this is erasable marker. This is not permanent, and I wiped it off afterwards.
We're going to shit.
Send somebody down. I did tell you there were some kids running, you know, they're already done with the races, and they're looking at an adult writing on the thing down there. Should we tell somebody about this?
They should.
Yeah, it was a good time. Just thankful for the Parks and Rec Department, everybody from the schools as well that, you know, even during a pandemic make some things work like they do. And everybody had a great time, and the Rotarians were good to provide the sugar to those kids and have it be a good time. So cool stuff, and the Rotary Club is just doing great things, seems like every week in the community. So that was this one this week. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Scopes.
Mayor, I don't have anything to report at this time.
Councilmember Beck.
I have a couple of things, Mayor. The Little Miss Spanish Fork applications are currently online, and registration ends on April 29th. So this is for little girls ages six to 15. If you are interested, just hop onto reconline.Spanishfork.org, or you can go into the Parks and Rec Department. And Councilman Mendenhall, I believe Councilman Argyle and I were able to go to the seventh graders at Diamond Fork Junior High and visit with them last week, talk to them about local government, and that's always one of my favorite things to do. Somehow I always get first period, and they're still asleep. They don't love hearing about us the first period, but then I think they start perking up as the day goes by. Last night we had our first meeting officially for the grand parade. We have 30 applications so far, so I just wanted to let businesses or organizations know that you can get online and apply, get your spot reserved for that. And then I just saw a couple of articles in the Daily Herald the last couple of weeks about Parks and Rec. And just kudos to Spanish Fork City and our Parks and Rec Department of just having great programs, trels, amenities. Some residents in another city was saying, we don't know if we want to build pickleball courts because maybe it's just a fad, which here in Spanish Fork, we already know that's not a fad. We have great trels and just kudos to our Parks and Rec Department. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, let's move on then. Let's go to consent items.
Mayor, on consent items, I'd like to remove item E and G. And with that, make a motion to approve the consent items, removing those two.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's go down to public hearing. Ordinance A02-21, annexing property known as the Laeson Annexation.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This, I really believe, is the smallest annexation that I have ever been involved in. See this little yellow area right here? For a property that's located on scenic drive right here, this is River Bottoms Road down below. Right now, there is a home in Spanish Fork that has the city boundary running through it. So this annexation would correct that and move the city boundary to where the majority of the property's backyard and all of the home would be located in Spanish Fork. This came about, as I understand it, you know, really is a requirement that Utah County made to fix this problem before they would issue a building permit so that the property owner could build an agricultural building on part of the property that will remain in Utah County down here. So this has been through the process. Protest period ended about a month ago, and we didn't receive any protests. We have no concerns recommending that the annexation be approved. And that's it.
All right. We'll go to a public hearing if we have any questions. All right, this is a public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Beck, second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come up and talk about this issue, you're welcome to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance A02-21, annexing property known as the Laeson Annexation.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argyle. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilmember Scopes.
Aye.
That passes. All right. Ordinance Z06-21, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Johnson 400 East Zone Change.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The subject property in this case is on the northwest corner of 400 East and 900 North. It's outlined in the plaque that we see there. It's just south of the Quick Quack Car Wash, which is the impetus for the proposal. They would like the ability to expand the car wash onto a portion of the property that's involved in the zone change. We haven't yet reviewed a formal site plan for that. I would guess that that will be happening here over the course of the next couple of months. There are some, these preliminary plans that we've attached in the staff report relative to that particular proposal. To keep it simple for tonight, but yet I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have in the applicants here as well. The subject property is designated mixed use on the general plan, and I think a change like this is something that's been contemplated for quite some time. Typically, we would wait for property owners to initiate this kind of a change, and given that that's what's happening, staff has recommended that the proposed change to commercial two, again for the property that's outlined in black there, be approved. The planning commission also recommended that the zoning be changed to commercial. And that's, once again, really all that we have to it.
Dave, what's going to happen to the sound barriers that's in place right now?
That's a really good question, and, you know, I might let the applicant answer that. Any other questions?
Are they selling that house? Or is the house going to stay?
This home here.
Right.
If you don't mind, I'll let maybe the applicant answer as well. I think I know that answer, but.
Hey, we'll let the applicant answer all those questions.
Come on, applicant.
Let's go into, we'll go into a public hearing first. I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anyone from the public that would like to talk about this? If not, then we'll have the applicant come up. And guess what? You have two questions already.
Deal.
Go ahead. Answer your, ask your questions.
Councilman Argyle, so we submitted our site plan to the city, and as part of that site plan, we felt it was a good idea to extend the tunnel beyond what our standard long length tunnel is. The tunnel currently is not 114 feet, which is our standard, and we want to expand it to at least 114 feet, but we're actually going to take it one step further. And we're going to expand it an additional 10 feet beyond the last air blower. So the car will still be inside of the tunnel 10 feet after the last point of sound, which is those air blowers when they hit that car. That's the loudest part of the car wash.
Right.
And that is an effort to further reduce the sound that is leaving the exit of the tunnel. In addition, we're going to make the tunnel exit more narrow than it currently is. It'll still fit our vehicles, but we can shorten it and make it less wide. In addition, we are planning on moving the sound barrier that's currently there, which we had helped from the BYU Acoustic Department to actually design that thing. We're going to move that south to the new property line when we extend the lot. So all in all, it's a benefit as far as sound goes. And we also plan on moving the access further south.
Right.
So that will be a benefit to the intersection as well.
So are you gonna, what are you going to do with the home, Johnson, the Johnson's home?
We plan on selling that, the Johnson's home off to somebody, whoever wants to buy it.
As a residential?
Well, that's the impetus behind the C2 is.
Okay.
I think a lot of times for people who might buy a home or want to repurpose that home to a business, getting before you guys tends to be fairly intimidating to most people. And I thought because I knew the mixed, I knew the general plan called for this, I wanted to just do it together to give whoever buys that home more options. So of course, they could still use it as a residence, as a non-conforming use, but they could also use it as a business.
Okay.
And I'm noticing other artery roads that are heading south from 1,000 North are having more C2 designations, businesses, offices, dental offices, chiropractic, physical therapy, things like that.
Does, so right now, the home, the other home, has a vinyl fence around it. Are we going to change anything with that where this is going to be commercial now against it? Is that going to remain vinyl?
Can you put that in there? I'll actually, I'll walk through this.
Around that home there?
It's in our packet.
Does it say that it's changing?
So, Councilman Argyle, what'll end up happening is this lot right here, I'm pointing right here, this lot, will get split right down the middle.
Okay.
And this portion will be added to this lot and become part of the car wash. And this portion here and below will be a new lot. However, we're actually in the works right now of having the Johnsons, as I currently understand it, make sure that the Davies', this is the Davies', by the way, have this portion of their backyard legally transferred to them. County records currently didn't, do not show this as the Davies backyard. So in it, but this application is for this entire portion to be C2, even this part of the Davies backyard. And I have a letter from Janet Davies in support specifically of the C2 designation, even on that portion of their, of their home. I also have a letter of support from the Johnsons for this, for this application.
So Janet's okay with this?
Yeah. And we, I actually supplied that letter to Dave and Brandon. So they have, and I have it in, on that thumb drive if you want to see it as well.
Okay. The only reason for those questions was the Davies was the one that were hugely impacted from the sound, us going through that process to get that down.
Yeah. If you could pull up the Davies support letter, it's really short.
I have a hard copy, so if you guys.
That's okay. Yeah, we've got them. I believe you. I think it's in our packet too.
They're also in favor of the quick, what we're going to do to the Quick Quack because it's going to alleviate some of their sound.
Okay.
It will absolutely improve that situation. And they were concerned about congestion. Sometimes 400 East backs up from that intersection. And moving that access further south is only going to improve that situation.
And I seen that. Okay. Thank you. Did you have a question?
No, I was just asking about the house too, just curious. But you answered that. Yep.
Just one general question. I know it's probably not applicable to this site, but maybe future sites that come in car wash wise to Spanish Fork. Is there any other places where you have washes where they try to line up or require the lineup to go the other way and exits towards a road instead of, I know all these don't border residential properties, but some of your, you know, some of these properties do. But the sound coming out of the tunnel instead of going in it, right? Pointing towards, you know, busy roads rather than pointing, being closer to residential properties? Do you find in any other cities that they have ordinances that require that?
No. I haven't seen that, but I have seen sound ordinances, which is what we went through for the, creating Left Field Fenway Park, the Green Monster.
Yeah.
That's, that was the result of complying with the sound.
Measuring and mitigation. Okay.
Good. Any other questions?
Appreciate your consideration.
Appreciate that. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Argyle and second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would go in. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance Z06-21, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Johnson 400 East Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Gordon. This also is a roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Ordinance O4-21, impact fee. Interactment. There he is.
So this is our annual review of the impact fees. Overall, they're being proposed to go up about $3,000. Construction costs have gone up more than that, it feels like.
No.
But this still puts us right about average with all the other cities that we compare ourselves to. The big winners or losers is, you might, depending on how you look at it, is transportation. It went up $1,600. That actually puts it more in line with what other cities charge and helps us to get caught up in that budget. We've bemoaned our transportation budget for years and years, and this directly helps that situation. Pressurized irrigation went down $900, and so that's a big one as we kind of pay off that reservoir. Other than that, nothing too major. I, I think everyone who looks at that says, yeah, construction costs have gone up by that much pretty easily. We went over this with the Home Builders Association. They actually have a new person in charge there. And, and so Deanne's moved on, and we met with the new guy, and he had a few questions, and we answered it and went through it. They were all transportation master plan related and impact fee related. And we were able to answer his questions and presenting those to you now.
Chris, how does this, so when I build a home and a lot, how is this determined? Is it determined by the size of the lot or the size of the home?
Yeah, a lot of these are dependent on lot size, or some of them at least. So it would be close to 17,000, or let's see, it'd be close to 14,000 plus 3,000. So yeah, 17,000. It'd be close to 17,000 is what you would pay for your impact fees for an average sized lot. If it was bigger, it'd be a little bit higher. Smaller, it'd be a little bit lower.
Okay.
Again, that's right around average for, if you're building, there's probably half the cities, you'd pay quite a bit more than that, and half the cities you'd pay a bit less.
So kind of based on both the home size and the lot?
Home size, they're not.
Just the lot size?
Now, a business size matters on your impact.
Different. Okay.
Homes, they just take the average. Now, if it's a multifamily. Homes, they just take the average. Now, if it's a multi-family home, a lot of times they all have a smaller tier for like pressurized irrigation or...
Okay.
So, aren't we going up seven, from 17 to, plus that 2,900 to 20,000?
No, 14 to 7, D.
Is your, is the, is the next slide wrong?
Okay, scroll down to the next slide. Yeah, you're right. So, what, what we are at 17,000 right now, and what we're proposing is to be...
So, recommended.
Oh, that's your, that's your special service district. That's your, that's your fees with your, I gotcha, your special service district.
Oh, yeah.
Everything added in.
Yeah, so, let me explain that, because that, the previous table would have been a bit confusing.
I gotcha.
We have our own electric, our own power system, which comes with an impact fee. A lot of these cities have Rocky Mountain Power, which does not have an impact fee, but they have what's called a connection fee. And, and so, what we did, in order to compare apples to apples, we worked with the Home Builders Association to add in Rocky Mountain Power's connection fees and our connection fees, and, and then it kind of leveled the playing field. Because their, their connection fees actually cover what impact fees cover as well, whereas we have kind of two fees, so.
Okay, I got it now.
Good enough. So, this is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Argyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anyone from the public that'd like to come up and talk about these, this issue, you're welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance 04-21, the impact fee enactment.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second one by Councilmember Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
That passes. All right. Ordinance O5-21, amending Title 15 land use of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code relating to various text amendments.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. These proposed changes are being presented for two reasons. First of all, the state legislature recently changed the state law relative to cities' ability to regulate accessory dwelling units. So, these changes would bring our municipal regulations into conformity with the new state law. And while we're at it, we are making some other things a little bit more clear than they were before. That's really it.
I like that. You know, Chris could take a lesson from you on that one. Thank you. All right. This also is a public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that would like to come up and address this issue, you're welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
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 All right. Any questions or comments on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 05-21, amending Title 15 land use of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code related to various text amendments.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes. This is also a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
That passes. All right. New business. Proposed acceptance of the Utah Valley, or Utah West Annexation for further study.
And again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposal involves starting the process really to potentially annex the lands that are outlined in yellow here. Just by way of a couple of points of reference, 300 West is really just right off the map right here. This is Cloon, if you guys are familiar with where that is. The airport likewise is just a little bit off the image to the north here. The existing city boundary is that line right there. So, the subject properties are contiguous with the city boundary right here. And incidentally, the area that the subject property is located in is designated for industrial uses on our general plan, but as is the case with where we're at tonight on this, we're simply requesting that the city council accept the annexation for further study. That starts the process that concluded tonight with the annexation that you saw earlier. Generally, it's about a 60-day process that we go through with the protest period and so forth. And accepting this for further study does not ultimately obligate the city council to do anything in the future, but it does start the formal process of reviewing the annexation.
All right. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept the Utah West Annexation for further study.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Combs Spring Water Tank Phase One Site Demo Guaranteed Maximum Price Pro-Built Construction.
The GMP is about $350,000.
You have done well. You learn quick, Chris.
He can't stand it. He's like Flo on that new progressive commercial where he can't stand not to say, "Okay, I'm going to tell you more." Go ahead, Chris.
That's good, Chris. Way to go. Proud of you.
We know you can't stand it.
No, I'm fine.
That's it?
All right.
Okay, ooh, I knew you had something more to say.
Yep.
She thought that was it, huh? Gosh. You know, I got a weak heart, Chris. You can't do that to me like that. All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Malcolm Spring Water Tank Phase One Site Demo Guaranteed Maximum Price Pro-Built by Pro-Built Construction.
Got a motion by Councilman Argyle.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Resolution 21-09, authorizing the floodplain manager to execute floodplain revisions.
Mayor, Council, this resolution would authorize the floodplain manager to execute any of the FEMA floodplain revision maps that, and acknowledgement, any of the forms associated with that. So far, we've not designated an individual, and we need to have somebody sign those for the city. Any questions?
Go ahead and tell them who or what.
Travis Warren, our surveyor, is our floodplain manager as well.
Who?
Travis Warren.
Any other questions?
Is this just because we're out in front of it is kind of a question I have where I see a lot of people that call me on my day job and ask, say, "Oh, all of a sudden, I'm in a flood zone, and I have to buy flood insurance," and it's very expensive.
This was precipitated because somebody's wanting to do one, and they need to sign it. You have somebody from the city sign it.
Okay.
For revision of the floodplain.
Such as a specific...
Yeah.
Okay. It's not entirely generic.
I think a good response to that, though, is we, we don't have any homes in the floodplain, and so, it's kind of rare. And, and so, mostly this would be used if some property wanted to be moved out of the floodplain so you could build a home in it.
Mm-hmm.
Just because we don't really allow homes in the floodplain, so.
Gotcha.
But he's, he's a licensed surveyor, and floodplain's all about elevation, and so, he's gone through all the training to become a floodplain manager, and really, he, he would know best, you know, whether it is or it's not in that elevation, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Great. Great. Any questions or comments? Other questions?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution 21-09, authorizing the floodplain manager to execute floodplain revisions.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilmember Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Let's go down to... Mayoral Proclamation Concerning Arbor Day. Is this my time? I get to...
Your time to shine.
I get to read this proclamation? All right. I did have one question in here before I read it. Maybe I don't anymore. Okay, I'm going to read it then. So, Vaughn, did you put in all these whereas? Because, you know, Junior did that, and I used to get, okay, so, just, all right, there you go. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewables resource of giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fire, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values and hence the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautifies our community, and whereas trees wherever they're planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now therefore, I, Steve Leifson, Mayor of City of Spanish Fork, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 29, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Spanish Fork, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generation. This dated the 20th day of April 2021. Did I do good, Vaughn?
Good.
Good.
So, however, April 29, Thursday, the Sports Park.
Awesome. Great.
So, the American Leadership Academy will be putting on a program, will be planting trees.
It's okay, I was going to have the mayor repeat it. It's his time to shine.
We will celebrate Arbor Day on the 29th at the Sports Park, 9:30, and there will be a program, and we will be planting trees. Did I do good?
Perfect.
All right. Good. All right. There's no end to the business.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you for being here, and it's good to be back.
Yes, it is.